Mr. Mayor, Councilmember.
It was leaking, but I don't know.
Yeah, that's, that's, uh, um, Ex-Councilman Cruz's pipe dream and, and, uh, it was, basically, it's a, a, a nice-looking historic monument.
That's correct.
I like the pipe dream.
I like the pipe dream as well. So.
French, would you just talk a little bit about the SCADA system?
Um, okay, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council at present, the, the SCADA system that we use, as I mentioned earlier, as I've read, um, down at the San Juan Chamo well field.
Why don't you just explain to the council what it does, or what it's supposed to do?
Oh, okay, maybe Councilmember Han and Cantu could help me on this because they saw a very nice sophisticated system at the treatment plant. Uh, it's, it's basically, um, an electronic human being that monitors, uh, pressures, water, uh, um, water depths on the wells. Um, it'll indicate leaks somewhere within the system. They won't tell you where it's at, however, it'll tell you that you're losing water somewhere. Um, then what it does is it spits out daily and monthly and, and annual reports if you need, um, if you need that, uh, and, and like, that's all the information that we compile at the end of the, at the end of the month and submit to the state engineer's office.
It also balances pumping.
It also balances pumping and, and it detects, again, the different pressure zones. So, basically, and, and Councilmember Han and Cantu saw those systems work at the plant. Same idea, just for water.
And it keeps us from overpumping a particular well where, you know, based on the amount of water we can pump out of it by a state engineer, it keeps us from overpumping on that, which we've done in the past.
It, it does do that. In addition, probably one of the most important things is it monitors, um, injection of, um, the salt that we use to, um, detain or that we use to chlorinate the water. So it's no longer a, a, a human task, it's, it's monitored by millimeters or whatever it is when it needs to be.
Go ahead, Marietta.
Um, just any other questions?
So is what you're hoping for here, Marietta, French, and Rick, um, um, just consensus on the top five?
Um, pretty much on the top five and the whole plan altogether.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we have to put, the majority of all, all public works are already in the state system. Um, I have to update all the other ones, and, uh, this is due on, uh, September sixteenth. So, just trying to get, we got an extension on it just because of the workflow, the workload, and Miranda moving to public work, so, um, pretty much an approval, and it's a working document. We can't really go back and change anything though, once we approve it here and submit it to the state. And they use it for grant funding, so, uh, you know, like CDBG, the legislative grants. Last year we submitted, probably, I don't know, uh, I don't have last year's, but we submitted and we got one legislative appropriation. So, you know, it's a wish list, but it, we want to make it a practical and realistic wish list, which I think the majority here now are on here, and it's just a lot of money that we are just trying to find sources of funding for. And the state has the process that if you do that, do it through the state, it gives you a better chance of getting funding.
Councilor Peralta, there?
Two things. One is I, I don't see anywhere in the plan wastewater sewer lines. Is there no source for funding to get some of these things done? I mean, you know, to me, it's more important that we take care of our waste than we do improving our water because we're going to contaminate the water that we're trying to improve eventually if we don't fix it. So to me, it's kind of like we're putting the second thing that we should be doing first, rather than, you know, getting rid of wastewater and making sure that it's cleaned up, uh, and providing more lines to more locations within the town and, and that, in order to protect our water sources. Um, because I think if you know, and you do know this, that the majority of, of the areas that we don't have sewer lines in are, uh, high ground, and they're the ones that are going to be providing waste into the aquifer, uh, that flows downstream into our well system, so, and to private well systems as well. So, I, I'm just saying that it's something that we should probably be looking at and trying to find sources of funding to, to do those because, you know, that whole Wymer area, we're putting water in there, but everybody's on a septic system.
Yes, Councilman, that, it, it almost doesn't make a lot of sense, the, the way that, the way that panned out, but, um, we are, we are looking at different sources of funding for wastewater projects. Um, again, one of them, and, and it's, it's, um, it's a little bit of a stretch, however, if we're, we're careful in the way we approach it, we may get funding, and, and that is through the Water Trust Board.
But it can't be used for wastewater, that's a problem.
Well.
At least that I, my understanding is strictly for potable water and not for...
Well, it would be, I, I, it would be for the protection of potable water, so, yeah. We, we are looking into, into what you just described.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think maybe it's something that we ought to talk to the Municipal League about as, as trying to, um, create a resolution or, or a emphasis to go to the legislature, there's, the way they create water, money for the Water Trust Board, that maybe that they can also create money for wastewater treatment and, and, um, trying to think of the word, um, transportation, I guess, is the best way to do it.
Collections.
Collections. I mean, what is, what is your feeling, members?
Counselor?
My feeling about it is, uh, it, we've got to have a holistic approach. Water coming in is essential, water going out, sewage going out, so, yeah. I would feel more comfortable if we had a plan of action for hookups for those that aren't, and repairs and maintenance.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just for the council's, uh, knowledge, that, um, even back when, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago, one of the bar major issues and, and what we looked at in trying to, um, do, use the dirty word annex, uh, we're looking at Canyon and El Prado because of the contamination of water in those areas, both of those aquifers. And one of the ways that we felt that we could solve that problem, because that's, like I said, it's coming down into our water system, was to be able to annex and, and go after grants to provide for a collection of, of wastewater and get people and close those septic systems and get rid of them. And, uh, so that's, that's the reason I mentioned it, because I think it's important for us to clean up our water.
I agree with you, Councilman.
Yeah.
There's more and more contamination going on. And French, I just want to put out something, and, you know, I know that we want people within our community to beautify their yards and where everybody look good and, but, you know, I've had several calls, and I don't know how we address this, is, you know, as people use water to water their yards and make it beautiful like we'd like, but then they're kind of, um, I want to say, um...
Abusing the privilege?
Uh, well, I don't know that they're abusing the privilege, but, um, but they basically get a kind of a, a double billing because the more water they use, the higher their sewer bill is, and the water's not going down the drain, it's actually be put on the landscape. And is, is there a way to address some of that? I don't, you know?
Councilmember Han had that question.
Well, Mr. Mayor, our, our hope was that once we get our, a financial analyst as support in, that she or he could look at flat rating sewage rates. We're not sure that it's financially possible yet, but that would be a task, and Mr. Bellis is, is aware of that, but I'm certainly open for other ideas.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, what we have been doing is we've been asking, uh, those people that come into the office and express that concern, that they put in another meter that's just for irrigation, which doesn't go to utility billing, um, for the, uh, for the discharge of the, of the sewage. So there's, I, I can get you a count on how many residents and businesses have a separate meter for irrigation, 'cause, and that doesn't go, it's just strictly water use.
Do you have any idea how expensive that is? Do you?
Um, yes, I do. I, not on the top of my head, and I don't want to give you...
Okay.
Incorrect information, but, um...
How does that get around the ordinance?
Uh, well, it's, it's set up as an irrigation system.
Still have to pay for that water.
Well, yeah, you pay for the water, but you don't pay for...
The sewage.
The sewage.
My understanding, though, was that there is no separation on the ordinance to allow for that.
I, I believe there is, I believe there's a, an irrigation meter that can be set up. And, and I'll, I'll, I'll pull that information for you, Councilman.
Been doing irrigation meter on a well, but I don't know that you've been doing on our utilities.
I...
I mean, the whole reason for charging, back when, for charging for additional sewer was to cut down overuse of water, because if you build just for the water usage, it's very inexpensive compared to what you're paying for sewer.
Right. And, and I, I believe, Councilman, this, this, um, ordinance was enacted by the planning department, um, through their, um, through their process and, and asking developers to provide, uh, for more landscaping, um, they were coming back and saying, well, that's, that's costing us a little bit more than, uh, on the water side, so the planning departments will, you guys can put in a, um, an irrigation meter that doesn't, that doesn't go with the, the domestic use or, or the potable use.
So you have a split at the, at the entrance of the water line to the business?
Yes, it, it wouldn't be a separate connection, it would be a, a split. That's correct.
And we can enact that right now, French?
Uh...
For those of us that are on water?
We have, we have been enacting it. Again, it's, it's, we don't, we don't, um, we don't, or, we don't force it on people when they come forth and they say that, that, you know, 'cause there are some people that have some, some really ni- nice landscaping, they come in and ask for it.
So you, you read both meters?
Yes, sir. Yes, and at utility billing, it is identified as irrigation. Their, the, their second meter.
And who controls, uh, whether it's, uh, being used for residential or irrigation? The property owner?
If I understand your question correctly, when they, when they do the tap, we, we go and do the inspection, and we're the ones that set the meter.
On a city line?
Well, it would be on a service line, off of a city line.
So the feed doesn't go into the house, so there's no way it can be used for residential purposes?
Right.
It's external to the structure.
Right.
I'd sure like to learn more about that, because that addresses some of the mayor's concerns, and, uh, it may be a solution, if it's cost-effective, for taxpayers who are paying, um, high rates for sewage that actually is going into their gardens.
Right, and it's based on water use. That's correct.
If Council wishes, we'll, uh, research that, see what the authority is under which we're doing it, or what language we would need if we don't have the appropriate language at this time, and we can bring that back along with the presentation by French at the Ex-Council meeting. We can post it for possible action, just in case we need to make adjustments.
And French, and, uh, Marietta, can we get a copy of that little book, the, the backup to this?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
It's, it's actually...
Oh, uh, French had one that, or...
Oh, he just has his single project center.
Electronically.
Like, uh, yeah, uh...
We'll, we'll, we'll be more than happy to burn the copies from Public Works for you.
Yeah, that's very minimal, that's all right. I think we probably need the bigger, but we can get it electronic, we figured it out.
We'll, we'll get it to you, yeah, it's, 'cause it's off, we have to print up the website from the state and, and scan it direct, we'll figure something out.
Oh, yeah.
To get you backup, 'cause there's, uh, four pages of information that we ask, and it's mirrored to the state's, uh, website, so the, all these questions have to be answered by the department. So it's a lot of detail.
Okay.
Descriptions and money amounts and the years, and if it's going to be more than ten years, some of these, you know, if it gets up to the top of the list, the governor Mary Vito would say, this isn't ten years, 'cause they're using sovereign's tax bond money, but we try to get them to fit the criteria.
Marietta, I think what, uh, council's probably looking for is that first block, which is the project summary, and we can maybe pull those out, do a cut and paste.
Oh, the top five, okay. For the top five, I could get those pretty quick to you.
Yeah, top five is what's...
Okay.
Stephen, you had a question back there?
Yeah, about the...
If you'll come forward so we can hear you.
With respect to watering hard surfaces, um, about a month ago...
The pavement won't grow.
Exactly. About a month ago, I, um, we had one of these thunder clouds come through and a burst of rain for about half an hour, I mean, just absolutely poured. The corner of the parking lot was still in front of the city, in front of Town Hall. The corner down there were, were gathered, but anyway, after it rained, I was walking around the plaza, at the southwest corner of the plaza, just across the street from Placita, um, there was a fellow watering his hardscape, um, and I want, it, does the, has the town ever passed a resolution saying, you know, don't do this, or have you ever implemented, uh, some sort of plan, so that, I, I, it bothers me when I see people washing off their, um, their sidewalks or their patio or whatever, why not use a broom? I mean, he, he, he stood there, I watched literally for five minutes, watched him, this an area, you know, not much bigger than right in front of us right here, just, you know, slowly pushing that water to the edge of the pavement, and I thought, I could have done that in fifteen or twenty seconds with a broom. Has, has the council ever done anything, or...
Councilman Peralta?
Mr. Mayor, uh, Stephen, there is a provision, when you, when the council declares a drought, that does not let you do that. If, if the council doesn't declare that, then the ordinance allows you to do it, so...
It, it would, I think...
No, no, and I understand exactly what you're saying.
A sense of the community is that this is not a good idea, folks.
Right.
Even, even if we're not under drought conditions, uh, we live in a, in a dry climate, uh, you know, think about it, use, use your broom, and if you want to eat off the surface, then, you know, scrub it with a toothbrush. Thank you. Now, I, I have one question about number thirteen, um, the parking plan implementation. Why, the amount of money? Over, over, over time, I mean, twelve million dollars, three years out, what, what, what is being implemented that's going to cost fourteen million dollars? Is this the purchase of the lots?
Ten-story parking garage. No, I'm just kidding, you tell the story.
With a hundred and fifty-foot radio tower. Yeah, a- actually, it is the, um, developing a parking plan, which include examining either the swap of properties for lots that are currently, uh, leased, um, acquisi- outright acquisition, right of ways, and exploration of the idea of, yes, possibly the development of a parking ramp structure.
Okay. So, Marietta and French, thank you, and, and, Mr. French, when you've got time, you will come back to us with, uh, that bifurcated, uh, feed so that we completely understand it and can pass that on to the citizens, along with the costs of doing that? And that may answer Councilman Peralta's, um, question regarding enterprise funds and my wanting to dip into those to flat rate them, even though we can't. Thank you.
So what is the wishes of the council, now that we've heard from Marietta?
Mr. Mayor, a move for approval with the adjustments that were made.
We have a motion to approve Resolution fourteen forty, we have a second.
I'll go ahead and, and second that for... Oh, good.
Oh, okay. We have a second.
I can do that from here.
Okay. All right, do we have, we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, um, first of all, I want to thank you, Marietta and staff and the department heads for all this work, and the very objective way that you've prioritized, so I'm grateful. Um, just want to run through some of our airport expenditures real quick, um, and just a brief descriptor, Marietta, um, and I'll use, uh, two thousand and fourteen rankings, so we can just go quickly to it. Item eight, uh, crosswinds runway, that's, uh, the process we're currently involved in.
Uh, that'll be the second phase?
Phase two.
That'll be this, phase two.
Okay. And then number fourteen, ramp rejuvenation at the airport, six hundred and fifty.
I'm just double checking with these two back here.
Oh, okay, I'll wait. While I'm waiting...
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just to point you to that, that is the current ramp on the current runway. There would be...
Oh.
Uh, it's just basically maintenance, they deteriorate, you have to come back and rebuild them.
And so, thank you, Councilman Peralta, so, uh, that six hundred and fifty is on our dime?
No. No, ninety percent of that is on the federal government, five percent is the state government, and five percent is the town.
So thirty thousand is what we can expect to see there.
Thirty-two-five.
That's, uh, maintenance cost. Um, zipping on down, Marietta then, to number twenty-one, runway approach lights, one point five.
So the, it's actually runway and taxiway lighting, um, the runway lighting, for, for the funding sources, again, this is ninety percent federal government, five percent state, five percent town. Um, it is to design and construct one runway approach and taxiway lighting in accordance with Federal Aviation Administration circulars. Um, the taxiway lightings will include parallel taxiways to runways four twenty-two and twelve thirty, so it's going to be the runway lightings for both the existing and the new runway, um, to improve safety and visibility of the taxiways for the pilots.
So another airport expense there of...
Uh, that would be on the town.
Fifty thousand.
On the town side, yes.
Yeah. And then another airport expense, number twenty-seven, remove taxiway A three, reconstruct taxiway A four, are we looking at the same process, Miranda?
Mm-hmm.
Five percent?
Yes, it's ninety-five and five, um, and it's to, it'll remove taxiway A three, which was originally a turnaround taxiway, um, and to reconstruct the taxiways A four, five, and six, and constructing a bypass to runway twenty-two to facilitate better aircraft-ground traffic flow.
Thank you. Uh, number twenty-nine, the Civil Air Patrol hangar.
The Civil Air Patrol hangar is something that was requested by Civil Air Patrol, and fifty thousand of that has been funded to date by the legislature. Um, the total amount of construction for that would come from legislative or other grants. Um, this is to plan and design and build a multipurpose building to include the aircraft hangar, office space, and conference training room for the Civil Air Patrol.
That is a project that the county and the town jointly applied for, uh, at the request of Civil Air Patrol, uh, and Bobby Gonzalez's office, and Mr. Gonzalez and Mr., uh, I believe Mr. Sisneros also had committed that they would see full funding to that, which would allow a updated former Air Force search and rescue surveillance aircraft, uh, which would match, uh, the needs that we've had due to the designation of the national monument, the anticipated increased number of people that are not familiar with our rugged terrain and the Box Canyon.
Full funding, I'm happy with.
Yes.
Thank you. We need more full funding. Uh, number thirty-four, the new airport terminal building at one point five million.
Okay, that, that's also a ninety-five and five split, so that would be seventy-five thousand on the town. It is to design, build, and equip a new multipurpose airport terminal building to accommodate pilot and passenger needs, or passenger waiting area, pilot briefings, and flight planning room, as well as airport management offices.
Thank you. Number thirty-five, uh, NAV aid relocation.
This is also a ninety percent five and five split, so twenty-five thousand on the town. Um, this is to design and improve the reliability and accuracy of the automated weather observation station, and improve the broadcast and reception capabilities of the remote communications outlet equipment that could be affected by any newly constructed buildings and air-ground, aircraft-ground traffic at Taos Regional Airport. It'll also relocate the AWAS and RCO towers and any other navigational aids that are required.
Miranda, isn't, is that within the, there's a similar line item within the, uh, grant for the crosswinds one ring?
That, that one just moves what we've got right now, this is to expand if it's needed once we see what, how all the buildings lay out.
Thanks, Miranda. Number forty-four, T hangar pad, general aviation parking ramp, one point six, uh, number forty-four, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's all good. That's also a ninety-five and five split, so that would be eighty-one thousand five hundred for the town. It's to design and build a new T hangar pad and general aviation heavy aircraft parking apron near the intersection of runways four twenty-two and the new runway, which is twelve thirty. Um, it's taxiway around a group of T hangars and additional parking ramp. The T hangars will be built, but there'll be no access to them, and need to be provided, aircraft owners will be able to access the taxiway and runway from their hangars.
Number forty-five, T hangars?
That's the actual hangars that would be associated with the hangar pad.
Five percent there.
Yes.
And, uh, we should indicate that, uh, there's two possibilities on the T hangars. One is that, uh, we can subcontract that to a contractor, um, where these costs would actually be absorbed by the contractor, and they would do the construction of the hangars, and then they would collect rental fees from them, uh, or I think the preference of John right now is that we would build them and that we would own them and then lease them out. So the revenue generated, uh, probably over a five-year period usually, would be intended to pay back any of the initial investments on that, but it can be structured either way.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, uh, there are some hangars that are existing on the airport right now that are privately owned, and they lease the space from the town for the, for those hangars, and, and they've built them and then, uh, leased them out, so they're subleasing them. Uh, this, there's been, um, a couple of individuals who have wanted to, to build hangars off airport and have access for it, so that there's a possibility this wouldn't even be needed if a private enterprise did exactly that on, on land that they already own, just off the airport.
Yeah, providing.
So, and, and in fact, in some of these cases, some of the things that, that is indicated here, it's, it's on need, so if, for example, your indication on Tuesday about how much growth the airport is actually going to have, some of these things may never happen because they wouldn't be justified.
Right, and there's some regulatory issues with, um, through the fence and all of that good stuff that I'm learning about, but, uh, if I could, thank you, thank you, Council. Uh, number forty-seven, airport water system, two million smackers.
This is also, this would also be a ninety-five and five percent split, so a hundred thousand to the town, and it would be to complete the installation of a water pump in, in an already existing airport test well, um, constructing water storage tank of sufficient capacity to meet the needs of firefighting operations, airport tenants and operators. The storage capacity that has been recommended by the town and Taos planning director is five hundred thousand gallons, um, and this is going to depend, I think, uh, a lot on what kind of water rights we have and, and acquiring water rights in addition to the actual construction.
Right, out there at the airport, and then, of course, a beta, will the beta adjudication impact this?
Test well.
Yeah, so, very much. I understand, and Councilman Peralta, I understand there's a lot of flexibility here. Um, so, just ballparking it in my head, um, I guess this is a budgetary question, Marietta. It looks like airport maintenance over the next five years, if some of these things happen, uh, will be close to a half million dollars, I'm just ballparking. Has that been figured into our projected airport budget? So when I think about the current airport expenses at a hundred and forty thousand a year, does that include, or as, as you project out, will that include these expenses?
Um, when we do the actual annual CIP, that's when we'll look at any of these that have been funded or are even eligible for receiving grants, and at that time, we will use the capital money sources that we have to fund whatever... the capital money sources that we have to fund whatever is in there. So we don't go out and allocate all these monies to these, uh, items only on an annual basis, do we do that?
Yeah, I'm just, and I think everybody knows where I'm going with this, I'm concerned about increasing maintenance costs out at the airport, and hoping to keep our deficit just as minimal as possible. Uh, so that's where I'm going there.
And you'll see that on an annual basis, or whatever changes throughout the year, we get another grant associated with this, and these all have to come back to council. And funding sources have to be identified.
Right. Marietta and Miranda, line item seven, structural assessment, property appraisal, three hundred and fifty thousand. We just talked about this the other night, is this the response to the council discussion on, on, uh, the building right across the parking lot?
Uh, and I think so, Rick probably can answer that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, council, it, it is, in fact, it's a combination of those two things we discussed, one is that, um, our prior attorney, uh, Mr. Caldwell, indicated that, uh, we were not in compliance, and that on our properties, that we did not have updated appraisals, either for insurance purposes, or where we're collecting rents, therefore, we could be out of compliance with, uh, uh, both DFA requirements and the anti-donation. So roughly four thousand to five thousand dollars per building, per appraisal. Um, and then additionally, uh, some of these buildings, uh, due to age or, uh, delayed maintenance, should have a structural assessment similar, uh, to what we're doing, we just, uh, ordered a twenty, Mayor, I believe it was about twenty-five thousand dollar, at the Youth and Family Center, twenty-eight thousand dollars, uh, for an assessment on that building, uh, which I think is well worthwhile, uh, we seem to keep having problems, we didn't anticipate, we cure one thing, and then find we have another problem, so we can get a realistic, uh, appraisal. Uh, as, as well as our older buildings, uh, this, this does not include, uh, the one we discussed yesterday, or the Youth and Family Center, but in anticipation of, yes, we, we ought to know going forward what our future liabilities are against these properties.
Right, and just to reinforce, uh, thank you, Rick, and, and to reinforce, Councilman Peralta, Peralta's concept of merging, um, obviously, number thirteen, number one, and number ten, at the two thousand and fourteen ranking, all are integrally related, the parking plan, and so on and so forth.
I, I would ask, yes, that, uh, we, we consolidate number one and number ten, uh, however, I would ask that we leave number thirteen. Um, since it envisions a number of steps, which it could include, could include something as simple as changing the parking meter scheme, or swapping a lease on a property, which we're looking at, versus the actual construction of the parking ramp.
That makes sense. Lots of, um, rig building, plaster, and repair. Uh, the old county courthouse renovation and, and restoration, and, and that's line item number eighteen?
Uh, again, this is a line item that I included, um, it's not anticipated that we would ever pay that full amount. But the hope is that by both the county and the town listing this on the ICIP, um, there, there are other sources of funding, such as SHPO, there are foundations, uh, that are interested in this type of work, and might even help us with Plaza. Um, but they also like to see, as do the federal funding sources, that it shows up on the state ICIP, and therefore has some basis, uh, that it, it is identified as a priority at all levels of government.
Line item nineteen and three, um, medio infrastructure, and then again, um, medio infrastructure utility improvements. Is some explanation there why those two are separate, why aren't they merged?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hahn, the reason they're separated is simply because of the funding sources. Um, and we would like to, if the project does become a reality, we would like to take care of the, the sewer system in there, um, before the roadway is complete, and that would give us more points on whatever application we submit, to whatever funding source.
Thanks.
Councilman, before you skip ahead of that, I, I did want to go back to fifteen, since that is about the only new one. Uh, twelve and fifteen are the only new ones that we didn't talk about. Um, number twelve, which is the replacement of twenty, Incor computers, those are laptops, uh, the chief, uh, the mayor just signed a grant yesterday, and the chief has applied for it, a burn grant. We're not too sure we will get that, but we did want to get this in here again, because the county, uh, would list this. And, um, the state homeland security money would require, which could purchase this, would require that the town and the county, uh, have it identified as an item in the ICIP. If we're to take advantage of the full CAD capabilities and commu-, mobile communication capabilities, uh, we've got to have wireless Wi-Fi adapted, uh, upgraded, um, dual, I don't want to call them laptops, they flip over as a tablet on one side, so they can get out of the car and write the tickets from forms, saves a lot of time, versus putting it back as a traditional laptop to, uh, enter into detailed police reports. Um, so this helps the chief, too, in pursuit of money in that, and the other one was number fifteen, shade tree restoration and replacement, this is a three-phase project, which looks at not just our boulevards, but our parks, and uses our, uh, forester to identify trees that need to be replaced, that may be ill, and a, a prescription plan for trying to save some of those, uh, but at the same time, identifying locations for likely replacement, both in the parks and the boulevards, to keep the character of the community. This is not major money, it's spread out, uh, long-term, but again, a program we would like to get on the record to start identifying money for, and there are at least three funding sources nationally that fund, uh, shade tree preservation and restoration, and we are a national shade tree community.
Thanks, Rick. Uh, number twenty, Marietta and French sidewalk replacement, um, I'm going to presume there's a, an objective priority list regarding that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hahn, yes, there is.
And, um, one thing I don't see in this, um, is the placement of new sidewalks where there is not an existing sidewalk. Any thoughts on that, Mr. French? There's neighborhoods in town without any sidewalk, kids cruising around in bikes falling into potholes, as you've heard me complain about, and, and things like that.
It's, uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hahn, it would be a, um, a combined project?
Street and sidewalk, then?
Well, to, to replace any deteriorated sidewalk, and to place sidewalk where there's no sidewalk. So, so it's, it's a, it's combined.
Oh, so I'm misunderstanding this, this isn't just sidewalk replacement, it's also where there may not be a sidewalk?
That's correct.
I see, okay.
And, and the reason it's listed like that is to not, um, confuse the funding source. Cause then they'll, they'll want a totally separate set of criteria for a new sidewalk, versus replacement of deteriorated sidewalk.
I got you. Okay, so there may be some new involved in this, an extension of a sidewalk that just kind of ends at a field.
Right, 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 yeah.
In a residential neighborhood, so we would just keep going, okay.
Yes.
Fred Baca Wetlands Trail in Decane, I thought that Steve's awesome crew had dealt with the Wetlands Trail.
Yeah, uh, Councilman Mayor, I, I can address that. Um, they, they did, uh, sort of a in-house patchwork to put it back online, but they're, they still believe that the materials involved need at some point a full replacement of the entire trail in there.
Skate park repairs, number twenty-four, um, having been out there, I, I see that they're needed, is, is the park? It'd be interesting to know if skateboarding is as popular now as it was a few years ago in the park, which was built, uh, just a thought.
Do you want to talk? It's actually probably more popular now than it was when we built the skate park.
Is that so?
As far as the use at the skate park, I certainly can't speak to that, but at the high school, I would say twenty percent of the kids are riding skateboards back and forth through the parking lots before and after school boarding. So.
Wow.
It's certainly increasing in popularity.
Okay.
And by the way, the cost of this repair is double what it costs us to build it.
Oh, don't tell me that, Fred, really?
And, uh, can, can?
We spent sixty thousand dollars in building it.
That whole structure over there was just sixty thousand?
Yep.
Wow.
Uh, Councilman, I shared your concern that, and as did Steve, that that was something we felt got a lot of use, and had a lot of liability to it. Uh, but at the time we listed it, it was not ranked higher because we did not have a potential source of funding for this project. Um, but there are a few projects on here, we are going to try to in-house find ways of, uh, either identifying funds, uh, internally, or an external source for them.
Right. Uh, Mr. French, what's going on, I'm with line item twenty-eight, Camino de la Cruz roadway infrastructure improvements?
Um, Councilmember Hahn, as, as far as, what?
What's the scope of work there briefly?
Oh, the, the scope of work there would be to, uh, build the road in the event that, um, the, the back part of, or the back half of the affordable housing is redesigned, um, that was to address what the Town of Taos would need to do. Um, and it was the, uh, the previous administration had a, um, had a priority to seek funding alternatives for affordable housing, or whatever, on that piece of real estate. So we're, we're simply trying to stay ahead of the game with listing those roadways that exist in the affordable housing on the ICIP.
Okay, I must be thinking about a different neighborhood.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is, this is, uh, for Loma Parta's, uh, low-income housing is at the senior, senior housing at the end of, uh, right across from Wymer Road, on the east entrance to Wymer Road, the dirt side.
Oh.
Just above your house.
Right, right.
Okay, so what, what the council looked at doing, and they, we hired some consultants out of California, I believe, to look at providing, uh, about a sixty-unit affordable housing across the street from Loma Parta, in, in that section of the, uh, Chumisavera subdivision. So taking the lots on that north side and combining, and making a sixty-unit, uh, affordable housing project in that area. In, in order to do that, then, the roadway that comes into that location would need to be upgraded and.
That's Mr. Espinosa's statement, we're trying to stay ahead of the game, got you, okay, thanks, thanks.
And, uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hahn, that would be the case with, um, item number nine, and, or, I'm sorry, item number thirty-six and item number thirty-seven. Cause those are all part of the, part of the affordable housing project.
Oh, I just got lost, wait a second, oh, you're right, okay, what were those other two, uh, French, I'm sorry?
Number thirty-six.
Thirty-six?
And thirty-seven.
Oh, okay, great, okay, thank you, French.
You bet.
Um, appreciate your patience, Mr. Mayor, just. Self-breathing apparatus, are, are our firemen, uh, is Eric still here, are we in danger, is there, uh, with the self-breathing apparatus? Is, is what we have on board right now inadequate? Does this priority need to be considered, uh, to be moved up? Uh, number thirty-three, Eric, scheduled for replacement?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, uh, Councilmember Hahn, we're not in danger, and it's not posing an immediate hazard, the reason that is on the ICIP list is those types, that type of equipment is on a schedule for replacement, per, um, federal standards. So, per NFPA, that has to be replaced every set number of years, just to meet their standards for safety.
Thank you.
Is, is that the same reason on, on number, we have number six and number thirty-two? Is it, we're going to want to replace one currently, and then we want to replace, uh, another pumper because of the rotation?
Okay, so, actually, they are separate projects.
Okay.
Um, number six is to replace a nineteen eighty-six Pierce Aero tanker. We are experiencing new issues with that every year, this year during our annual pump testing, we found that it not only struggled to meet the pump testing, it did, but it struggled to meet it, but we also have piping within the plumbing system for the, um, pump itself, that has ro- rusted and rotted out, that we're going to have to cut out and cap. Um, so that, that type of apparatus's main job is to bring water to areas where we do not have hydrants. And because that current piece of apparatus is beginning to, I don't want to say fail, but not perform at the, uh, level it used to, we do really need to begin to look into replacing that, we've been, um, working on funding for several years now. Per NFPA, they say apparatus needs to be replaced every thirty years, no questions asked. Um, if you move down to the other one at thirty-two, where it says pumper under two thousand nineteen, that item is to address engine eight, which is a nineteen ninety-four Pierce Sabre. That apparatus is currently stationed at Station Three, down in Los Cortovas, um, at that point, it will become rather aged, we would like to replace that with a engine, basically mirroring what is currently stationed at Station One. Um, once we're able to replace that, all the engines.
I'm gonna have to jump in real quick, I'm gonna have to get off the line, um, cause I just got to the airport, but, um, I guess you want to just email me, let me know how.
He probably doesn't.
Oh, okay, do we have to take his vote though, or? No, okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Okay, so, um, as I was saying, that engine will replace the main engine at the station, all the engines will then shift down to, uh, the concurrent stations behind that, and the engine, engine eight, which is currently at Station Three, we have an additional ICIP under line item number forty-three, engine eight refurbishment. That truck will then hopefully be sent back to, um, Appleton, Wisconsin, be refurbished, and then come back as an active pumper, as well as a replace, or, sorry, um, a backup pumper. That pumper we can then count on as having an additional reserve pumper that's fully operational, we can then show on our documentation to ISO for increased credit and a better score.
Thanks, Eric.
I have one more question on the wire, if you don't.
Go, go for it.
You talked about the main station, is that the replacement of the main station, that, you know, it's a million and five?
Okay, um, that main station, we, when we discuss fire stations, we line them out under either main station, substation, or administrative area. Those are just the different ways that New Mexico State Fire Marshal's Office separates them out per our funding. So if it is designated as a main station, which are, um, bays, offices, restroom, then it will qualify as a main station, we get more funding for that. Substation is just the bays, an operations area, less funding, so, that project, number forty-two, was backed rather heavily by previous administrations that wanted to see additional coverage in the north, northwestern area of our district. Um, it would behoove us to ensure that we do have appropriate coverage in those areas, as that is a large. Yeah, air, airport, um, kind of by the Sawmill, the whole, um, Los Colonias area, there are a lot of residences out in that area. So it would not be a bad idea to ensure additional coverage, because it is quite a distance from here.
Don't, don't we have, uh, location from the county at the old armory for that area, did they put a fire station in there?
Not to my knowledge, no.
The Los Cortovas, um, uh, station, shouldn't that be funded by the county?
So when we get into county and town lines, it is somewhat convoluted.
I understand our coverage, no, I'm not questioning that, I'm just saying is that why shouldn't, why shouldn't that and the La Co-, Los Colonias, uh, airport area be funded? and the Los Colonias airport area be funded by the county for equipment?
To what I have always been directed and understand, the county has always provided both funding and coverage for the EMS services in those areas, and we have always covered both financially and, you know, operationally, fire services for those areas.
Operationally, I'm talking about equipment. Two different things.
And, yes, sir, on that.
I'm just saying is in other words, for example, they have a fire station up in, in Taos Canyon. That's still in our coverage area. They have a fire station, you know more about this than I do.
On the cycle.
On the cycle, that's in our district.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
And, and all I'm trying to get at is that it would help us an awful lot to get the equipment you need in these areas if we could get some assistance from the county to support halfway or whatever to, to do these things. The reason I'm asking that question is this new tanker that you got, how much money do we get every year from the fire phone?
Roughly two thirty-five.
Okay.
Approximately.
So to buy that tanker that we're looking at up here would take us three years?
Mm-hmm.
Well, in probably four years to provide equipment as well.
And we can't retroactively use the money, I know that if I say wrong. But all I'm saying is that if we're not looking at replacing the tanker in Los Cortovas and get the county to do that, you know, it'd make it a lot easier for us to fund some of these other things that are necessary. Funds aren't there, and we're not gonna be able to come up with it out of our, out of our budgets when there's so many other needs around there.
If I may, sir, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Peralta, initially, you had brought up Rio Fernando's coverage district as well as Ono Cycle's coverage district. Legally through the State Fire Marshal's Office, those are not our coverage districts. Those are completely different areas. We do have mutual and automatic aid agreements signed with them, but that is different than, I believe, what you were getting at. When it comes to the equipment, we're not, it's not so much replacing the equipment that covers those areas, it's replacing the equipment in town that is initially addressed. So say we are to buy a new engine, it will go into Station One across the street from Town Hall. That engine, which is our newest engine at this point, will then go to Station Two off of a Camino de Santiago across from Friday Motors.
I understand it, but what you indicated to us was that in the future, the equipment that's in Los Cortovas need to be replaced.
Mm-hmm, and.
And that's what I'm talking about, is I'm not talking about the ones in Station One, Station Two, I'm talking about Station Three or, or the eventual Station Four or the eventual Station Five that we may be thinking about that are not located within the limits of the town, and we should get support from the county for the equipment, not the operation, not the response. I understand what our areas are for that, but I think that we should be looking at saying, in order for us to be able to respond to those neighbors of ours, we need some assistance with the equipment.
Yes, sir, Councilman Peralta, if that is a direction that Mayor and Council would like us to look into, that is certainly something that we will be happy to do if that's what you would like us to do. On the note of what you are bringing forth at this point, all I can really state is that this juncture, the county has always provided ambulances, personnel, all their equipment, and likewise for us to help serve on that old agreement.
And by the way, the county doesn't supply the ambulances, Holy Cross Hospital does.
That and grants, they have received several grants.
We buy them a new ambulance every two years.
And, and also there's money that is through the, through the.
A contract.
Through the fund that has been, through the general fund that has, through the county that has funded an additional ambulance too, so, both ways.
It comes from both ways, but if that is a direction you would like us to look forward as, you know, pay a possible MOU between us and the county for equipment in the future, that's something we can look into and try and work with them on.
And Mr. Bellis, you know, this issue, talking about it, might be an issue that we wanna talk about in the joint meeting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we'll put that on there. I know that when I left, I was working with the Emergency Management Director at the direction of the County Manager, there was a plan for two new fire stations to cover area now that the town is covering in county, and one would be located in the Talpa-Yano area, and the second one was actually to be located in the area of the airport. An MOU might be cheaper to the county than establishing two new fire companies and having the staff those, 'cause particularly the one at the airport, I don't know where they would get the volunteers to actually man that.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, that's your town manager, I agree, I believe that an MOU between us and the county would definitely be a much less fiscally taxing to the county as we already have the volunteers that cover those areas. And, you know, there's a very large percentage of our volunteers that do not live within town limits themselves. You know, they live in Maranchos, El Prado, Talpa, all those different areas. So, you know, that definitely is something that we can look into if you would like us to.
Well, and I, I wanna support the mayor's idea that we get this on our next joint town and county meeting. I think it's appropriate that we start there before we ask our local fire department, the county, to try and solve a problem that we haven't arrived at a solution. If everybody feels comfortable with that, and agrees with that process, let's get it on our next joint town-county.
You're correct, Councilmember Hahn, I wasn't trying to push this off on the department, I was trying to get information so that the council can take and make the policy decision that they need to make.
Right, I understood that, but I'm, I'm hearing Eric state, well, we'll, we'll try and get something going, and I just wanna get him off the hot seat.
He needs to conform us, not from you.
No, by all means, any information.
But I can't, but we can't do anything if we don't have the information.
Any information you would like, request, please just send it to us, we'll do the best of our abilities to give you any details that we possibly can.
Thank you, Eric. I'm, I'm gonna move along pretty quickly if that's okay, 'cause I know everybody's gotta get out of here at eleven. French, La Posta Road Extension, could you give me a briefer on that? Ever so brief.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hahn, La Posta Road Extension is a project that was designed, oh, probably about nine or ten years ago. And again, it was, it was a project to relieve traffic on sixty-eight and get them from sixty-eight to Camino del Medio. In addition to that, the town of Taos is a, a tract of land there that former Mayor Dudon was interested in looking at to provide some type of affordable housing or some type of recreational park.
So we're at T's right now, are we looking at an, an extension going across that big field to the west?
That's correct.
Gotcha, and it would tie in with?
It would tie in.
Come around Fredbaca Park or go to the north side of Fredbaca?
Yes, it would tie in on the south. South side of the.
Fredbaca Park.
Fredbaca Park, and, and not cross the, the.
Wetlands.
River or the wetland.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, French. Thirty-nine and eleven, Parks and Rec Master Plan, and it's, it's another Councilman Peralta approach, and the walking path repairs in Kate Carson. I understand why those are two separate lines. Fredbaca restroom upgrade, same thing. Youth and Family Center play structures and landscaping, just a briefer on that, Ms. Marietta, and Steve was, Steve's not here anymore.
No, that's probably Brian, so I think just replacement.
Brian, right?
Replacement of some of that equipment and beautification of his area that has nothing to, in there, I guess, let me just look for that, hold on. What number was that, Councilmember?
Number forty-six.
That's so far down the road, it's like we're getting new kids each and every day.
Right.
I spend a lot of time there and.
Maybe yell to Miranda, 'cause she really needs attention. Who is it?
That's the playground?
Yeah.
That original playground was purchased and installed in nineteen ninety-eight, just before we opened the Youth and Family Center.
That's the one right next to the skate park?
Right. Immediately, immediately north of the Youth and Family Center.
And we're looking at replacement, Miranda?
Replacing that, and I believe what Brian wanted to do was move it to the front of the building, so that there was more of a separation between the teenagers that were on the skateboard park and the little kids that were on the playground structure, so putting the playground structure right in front of the building and then doing some landscaping around it.
Okay. Last question.
Not a good idea.
Ultraviolet light, well, we'll get there. Ultraviolet, ultraviolet lighting system, I'm gonna guess that's because the current system is gonna be outdated by then?
No, the current system won't be outdated.
Okay.
It's just an additional disinfection system. There's nothing really wrong with the disinfection system we've got right now, it just provides an additional level.
Okay.
Trying to remember all this time.
Okay. Thank you.
It's okay.
That's it for me. Thanks for your patience.
Just don't use it to get a tan.
Okay, we were under discussion, so if we're finished with the discussion.
Well, Councilmember Hahn pretty much nailed everything, but you know, my, the one for the youth and family play structures is so far down the road, and we're having babies born every day and growing up every day, and that's just way too far down, so if there's any way of moving that up sooner, that'd be good, 'cause I take my grandkids there all the time, and it's just in so much need of upgrade.
Just don't put it in the front.
Yeah, I don't think that's a good idea.
Those little kids will be running into the parking lot and getting run over.
I know.
And they say, well, we'll have fenced, and you know, unless you have a bodyguard sitting at that gate. I know kids, we all have grandkids and kids and they.
Especially ones that go right over the fence.
It's a climbing area.
All right. Mr. Mayor, what I did wanna point out is that in, in using the state ranking on these, sometimes it's not that the director or administration think it's a low priority, it doesn't get full points, because typically we, in that case, we don't know how we would fund it. So if you don't identify a source, you don't have a plan for how to get that money, you lose points before you even start.
So there was a motion, and there is a second call for the bill?
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Kanchi?
Yes.
We have a motion to adjourn. Rick, did you, there is one more item, did you have something that you needed to report, the town manager's report, did you have anything that you needed to?
Uh, no, not really.
Okay.
So we have a motion to adjourn.
Very quickly, Mayor, I'm gonna, as, as you're aware, Mayor, from also being county commissioner, when myself and Conrad Cordova were at the county and hitting the nine-one-one transition, we, along with the nine-one-one board and first responders advocated very strongly for the idea that, given the projection of what costs would be to fully credential our staff and move them ahead, if we wanted to keep them, we had to have a more realistic budget, and the only way that was really gonna happen and be affordable, particularly to our smaller partners, was to look at the E-nine-one-one EMS tax. And at the time, the discussion was about eliminating one or two of the existing GRTs that were related to indigent care or to retire, one of the others, not being used for the hospital anymore. And to come up with a one-eighth to make that possible so the public appeal could be made, that we would not be raising GRTs but merely replacing one with another. And as many of you, most of you are aware, the county has in fact eliminated one of those one-eighth GRTs and scheduled it to be put on the ballot to be eliminated, but to be re-identified as a general-purpose GRT. And I, I would urge the council and the other partners of that nine-one-one system, given our, I think, very realistic projection of where those numbers are gonna go in the next two years, to use that opportunity of our joint meeting coming up with the county commission or if we need to do it beforehand in order to make it on the ballot at the time, to consider adjusting that GRT rather than general purpose for E-nine-one-one EMS purposes. And that would result at minimum in a half million dollars annual savings to both the town and the county, and I think would be much more attractive to Cuesta, which gets seventy thousand dollars right now from the county to run its EMS. There's, so I guess there's a six, five hundred and seventy thousand dollar advantage to the county, but it might also be very attractive to Red River at that point if they could get EMS and nine-one-one assistance rather than competing with us for those state funds.
Okay? We have, get that facilitated, Rick, so that we can get that on an agenda or however we need to move forward with it. So, we have a motion to adjourn.
Second, I'm, yes, I'll motion that.
We have a second. All, all.
I think we had a motion, then we went back.
We didn't have a second.
I'll second it.
Now we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Marietta, Eric, Miranda, French, Stephen, I'd like to thank you for your hard work and your attention. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you. And if we can get that list of the top five priorities we have.
Okay, I will get that scanned, we'll have to adjust the top one and include it, and then I'll get the rest.
Obie, thank you.
Your day is.